Let's call this meeting order and first rise for
Quite to the flag. A quite allegiance to the flag of United States of America.
And to the Republic for which is hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and the liberty just as we're all.
Welcome all to our meeting. First item, you've all seen the minutes of the last meeting. Is there any questions on that? It's not. Do you have a motion to approve?
New for approval.
Second, we approve the minutes of the last meeting. All those in favor, aye? Any opposed?
To a motion passed.
To approve.
I'm on motion second.
Motion in seconds to approve the minutes of the last meeting and further discussion. If not, all in favor in the motion signify by saying aye. Aye, hold the same sigh. Curse and cares.
Okay, Sheriff Ritter, you have some transfers you'd like to take care of?
Yes, sir. Not sure if you want me to read each one of these. I certainly can. Give me two, but they are well listed on the agenda.
And they're all going to the same use.
Correct. By virtue of, by virtue of having fewer openings, that means we're spending more money out of the salary line items. Why I had to, you know, I've had to scrape what dollars are left out of about a half a dozen different line items in order to populate the overtime line item in the jail.
I had a question about why the overtime's already is far behind. Cause I thought that we gave you like an extra transport person last year and everything like.
We just, we just got the, just got the extra transport person in place.
Okay.
And we continue to have more and more, more and more transports. The mental health transports continue. They've not fallen off at all. The medical transports and, which includes anything from taking people out to the hospital, doctor's office visits, even rehab. Some who have had rehabilitation on surgeries or whatever, other types of medical issues like that, all require transports. And, you know, when we have a staff of maybe at any given time of eight people to run the entire facility, we have to call people in on overtime. So I, my hope is, is that as time goes on and this second transport person, you know, gets established well enough, that that will start to fade off. But right now, this, this second transport person is doing a lot of court transports. We've got a lot of people going to the courts and so, I mean, it's, it's pretty dynamic. And, you know, if you want to stop by sometime and, and kind of watch what they do, you're more than welcome.
Say you become a volunteer.
I just, I just wanted that explanation. Only if you give me a taser. We've had this discussion.
Comes with.
So for clarity, this is all within the jail budget.
Correct.
And it's all to fund needed in the overtime.
Correct.
Now, what will happen for the remainder of this year in the overtime?
This won't be enough to.
That's what I'm afraid I would.
Be enough. My projection is somewhere in the neighborhood of 270,000 total for the year. This will put us at about, math is not going to be correct, but 200 and, yeah, about $215,000, 213,000. So I suspect that we'll have to find an additional $60,000 before the end of the year.
Randy, how much did we cut your budget during budget hearings?
75,000.
We took 75 out of the overtime.
That's correct.
Okay.
Randy, I have a quick question. Does it take two people when you transport someone or just one?
It depends on the classification of the individual. Most of the people that we transport require two people. And that's the other thing. I only have two dedicated transport officers and each one of them, depending on what they're doing, have to have somebody else with them.
I just have one more question. Did you draw down each one of these and, and leave enough in there in case someone gets hired? That is enough for the rest of the year? Okay, that's good.
Could I go on record as saying I hope you will not give Beth a taser?
I can understand your concern.
Doesn't she have to take a hit first?
So one, one of the things I will mention, and I had planned to mention that as well. When I talk about, I, I just wanted a second to talk about the new inmate healthcare contract and the added costs for that. One of the things that I did during the negotiations with that company and for this contract was getting them to agree to start the billing process for us on the mental health transports. So as we're making these mental health transports, a few years ago, I worked with Indiana Representative Brad Barrett to create new legislation that actually allowed the sheriffs throughout the state to bill the, you know, insurance companies or Medicare, Medicaid for these mental health transports. And that has passed and it's, it's in law. But up until this point, we've not had a mechanism in place in order to do that. But now with this new contract, they will start billing for us. And there is a potential for some revenue. I will say that with a small amount of caution because most of the people that we're getting, it's not likely that they actually have insurance or form Medicare or Medicaid. So we're going to certainly do the best that we can with that. And if we can help, if we can help pay back some of this overtime that we're spending in order to do these, then I certainly think that's a great use for that statute.
Anyone desire to, we read the list of the. Hey, do we have a motion then to approve these transfers, which I see is a total of $106,000? Is that correct?
Oh, what, on your papers?
Mine says 106. Agenda's 93, I'll say 3,000. I'm going by the.
That's the form. You ought to go by that.
Yeah. So you know which ones are correct?
I did, I did do the agenda, so I.
Lobby form. The 93 that's on the agenda.
My form is 93.
93 is correct.
93 is correct, so I will change that on this form.
I'll make a motion that we approve for then transfer the 93,000 from the action to items A through J.
Sec.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved, Randy, so.
Great, thank you.
We will not look forward to you returning for. Trust me, I don't want to be here either.
Now, I will mention, I will mention that the inmate healthcare contract, we're going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000 short this year in, in that budget. So at some point, we'll start looking closer to the end of the year. I suspect I have enough in that account now to last until early fall. I'll keep a monitor of that and.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or anything else for Randy? Aaron, I.
What was the amount as a question?
Sorry.
Was the base amount of the increase to the QCC contract from last year to this year, just to base?
Last year, and I'm going by memory and, and, you know, I'll have to give you a rough guess. But last year, the cost was, I think, 835,000. In this year's.
This year's 97,7. 977.
Sure. Just real quick, I'd like to extend my condolences to, to your department and the laws that you had with your, uh, what we did it. And my concern is your staff and I hope your staff is doing well and, you know, it's, uh, mental health is a, is a tough thing and, and I know you guys have dealt with a, a pretty major deal with that process. And so I just wanted to thank you for the, taking care of, in the professional way that you did. And the services that they had for him was very, very good. So thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We've invested a lot in the mental health of our staff. Everything from, you know, spending quite a bit on an app that they have that helps them individually. It also gives us some kind of an idea on, you know, where we're falling a little bit short. So we can address those quickly to bring in specialists for debrief after that incident. And then we have yet another event planned or in the planning within the next couple of weeks. So, you know, it's an ongoing process, but I do appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Anna. Thank you. Health Department, Dan, Dr.
Dr. Bales is going to present.
Before she presents, I want to do a quick shout out. The Health Department is taking donations right now for back to school events. And we have donation boxes set up at libraries in Cambridge City, Hagerstown, Centerville, Richmond. We have one at the Fountain City Mini Mart. We have one at Cronin Toyota and one at Freedom GMC. We're working on a couple locations for Wetzel as well. They can also be dropped off at the Health Department. That's any supplies that you could think of for school. Backpacks, pencils, paper, anything that a child will take to school.
Hello, I am Dr. Jennifer Bales, the Wayne County Health Officer, and I do have Dr. Ryder with me as well, Chair of the Board of Health, if, to assist. Today I am here to talk about the Syringe Services Program. Also more colloquially known as the Needle Exchange Program. This was given a two-year session and is up for review now. My goal today is to talk about the history, briefly the current state, the data, and then make some recommendations. It is a political and complicated problem and one that is often emotionally charged for people. So I do think you have a packet with all of the information that was prepared by Dan as well as by the Indiana Department of Health that I'm going to go through. And Dan's going to scroll through some slides up there for. So in 2016, Wayne County established its SSP or Syringe Services Program in response to a severe hepatitis C outbreak and in hopes of preventing an HIV problem. The county's hepatitis C outbreak rates at that time were top five in the state of Indiana. So current state is that the Wayne County Health Department operates the SSP on Tuesdays and Fridays from 12 to 1:30 at the Centerstone Office on 15th Street. Services include a distribution of syringes, which is no more than 100 syringes at this time. Administration of the Indiana Department of Health designed questions to participants to collect data. Provision of educational materials, distribution of sanitation supplies for safe and sterile injections, and then also condoms and Narcan. Collection of used syringes. We also offer STI testing twice monthly. Insurance navigation is offered once a month by Aspen. And we collect recorded syringes through the 911 dispatch Monday through Friday on business hours. The Health Department offers that service as part of this program. Currently, it is a partnership between the Wayne County Health Department and Reed Health. Reed Health provides an annual grant that in the past has been about $30,000 to purchase syringes. And the Wayne County Health Department covers the cost of staffing, other supplies and syringe disposal, which is fairly expensive. So the total cost of the program is about 60 to 65,000, kind of depending. And that is on that second page of that packet. The next page starts to look at the data. So I want to just be transparent about it and provide some caveats to the data. The data is only as good as the testing. So there's no way to test everyone in the community, so it's about what you have access to. A good example of that is you can see on the blue line there, that is Wayne County, whereas the yellow line is Indiana. And you see a drop there in 2020. That's not likely actually a drop in hepatitis C, but more likely related to COVID and the limits that that created with testing and accessibility. Also, the data only goes through 2023. So that's just kind of how it works. We provide all of the data. We collect all of the testing done at the Wayne County Health Department as well as other healthcare facilities. We provide that to, to the state. They collate the data. They look at the data across the state and then they give it back to us and it's delayed. So this data was all prepared as of March 17th. And that was the most recent data that we, that we had available at that time. So I don't have 2024 numbers. And if I was gonna guess about 2024, I would say it's probably going to be a little bit lower only because with the turnover of the Health Department, there was some decreased testing at that time. The CDC reports that an SSP program can reduce the incidence of HIV and hepatitis C by about 50%. And that's what you can see is that basically from 2016, we had an incidence of about 160, which is a rate of 240 per 100,000 population. And it dropped to 81 or a rate of 122, which is about a 50% drop. Now, the next slide compares us to other counties. So when we made this decision in 2016, we were, I believe it was number four, but top five in the state of Indiana. In 2022, we were number one as far as incidents of hepatitis C in counties in Indiana. And in 2023, we were number two and beat only by our neighbor Fayette County. So still in the top five. Now, the next couple of pages in your packet relate to sexually transmitted disease, which is not spread directly through IV drug use, obviously, but is suspected to be high in this population. And this program allows us access for testing and also condom distribution. You will see that adult syphilis is on the rise there. Those numbers look a lot smaller than chlamydia or gonorrhea, but it is very, very important because congenital syphilis is a devastating illness to, to a fetus, can lead to stillbirth and very significant comorbidities. So something to think about as we're trying to manage illness in our community. So I'm going to skip over the next couple of pages and jump to the, the graph on HIV. So the blue line is your HIV prevalence in Wayne County and it's pretty stable there. So now that we have medications where people can live with HIV for a near normal lifespan, that prevalence, which is not new cases, but it's prevalence in our community stays stable. Our red line on the bottom is new HIV cases. And I mentioned that specifically because it is so low. It's very, very low. Zero cases in 24, 22 and 23, less than five. So not zero, non-zero, but still very, very low. This is important though, as we have a conversation about an SSP because hepatitis C is considered like a canary in the coal mine. It's like the warning that you, that you have a needle sharing problem. It's the first thing that you see rise. So if you don't manage the hepatitis C, then you will likely have an HIV problem if you have a needle sharing problem. So the hepatitis C tells you you have a needle sharing problem. And then you have that, you eventually will have an HIV problem. So something to consider. Now, the next slide looks at naloxone and overdose death in our county. And really what I was trying to get at was, do we still have an IV drug use problem? And I think if you work in healthcare, like I do, right? I'm an ER doc or law enforcement or mental health. You don't need a graph to know that we still have an IV drug use problem. It's still very significant in our community, but I did want to try to provide you with some data. So our drug overdose or overdose deaths from opioids is still relatively high. And from 2018 to 2022, we were ranked 91 out of 92 counties. So second worst. This is a, the orange bar is how much naloxone that the Wayne County Health Department distributes. Now, this is not just at the SSP. This is all sources from the Wayne County Health Department. And there are other sources of naloxone in the community as well. But the point here was just that we're still giving out large amounts of Narcan, which means people still think that they need large amounts of Narcan. It's really not good for anything else. So if people are taking it, it means there's still an issue to be dealt with. So the next graph is participants in the program. The orange is new participants and the blue is repeat participants. Now, once you are a new participant, if you come back, you become blue, do it same year. But, and really what I'm going for there is to kind of figure out if we're still reaching new people that are suffering from IV drug use issues. And it does seem that we have a constant flow of individuals into the program. And that program does, does then does allow us to access them for testing and recovery overdose prevention. So this is important because the CDC reports that new users entering a, an SSP or users who are new to an SSP are five times more likely to enter treatment and three times more likely to quit. So it's an access point that's, that's relatively important. Okay, on the next slide, this is really to address needle trash. You know, a big community concern is needle trash in, in our streets and putting our, our community members at risk. I do want to say one caveat, to some extent, needles returned is an estimate, so I'll talk about that. So blue is syringes distributed. So this is how much we give out and orange is how much we take back in. Now, when a person brings needles back into the SSP, ideally they are bringing it in a Sharps box that we have provided to them. That's not always the case. Sometimes they bring it in a plastic bag or in their pockets or backpack or whatever. And we give them a Sharps box to put it in. That Sharps box is like red and kind of semi-transparent. And so they look in it and we look in it and kind of say how many needles are in there. It's kind of a guess. And then that's how many that they get. You get as many as you give. Now, if you, if you have not been there before or you don't bring any needles, then the most you can get is 20. So there's an incentive to, to bring the needles back. So it's an in and out kind of exchange. Now, according to the CDC, one in three law courses are stuck by a needle at some point in their career. So needle trash is, is important because it's helping prevent that. It's also helping prevent that for first responders, EMS and fire department that show up there. I would also say that a reduction in hepatitis C is protecting those people as well. If you get stuck, it's very traumatic. I have had my own needle sticks in working in healthcare. And it's traumatic. You have to go through months and months of testing and it's very stressful because you don't know what's going to happen. So reducing the rates of hepatitis C and HIV in our community protects everyone who takes care of other people. Okay, the next slide is about 911 calls for syringe pickup. 911 dispatch can let the Wayne County Health Department know that there are syringes for, for pickup. And we provide that service as part of the SSP program. Now, the numbers are lower in 2025, but you know, it's May. There's lots to happen still. Okay, now, the Indiana Department of Health did share with us multiple articles and information. And there is just one that I thought was useful to share with you. They sent us an article from the AIDS Journal. And it was talking about the impact of Syringe Services Program closure on the risk of rebound of HIV outbreaks among IV drug users. So our issue right now primarily is hepatitis C. But as I mentioned before, hepatitis C is more transmissible than HIV. It moves around quicker from person to person. So it's kind of a faster issue. So you would expect this to be higher. So they did a modeling study looking at a rural American setting with a previous HIV outbreak among IV drug users and what closing the existing SSP did to that community. And they modeled out that it resulted in a 2.6 fold increase in new infection over five years in IV drug users. So if you were to extrapolate that to hepatitis C, it would suggest that that rebound would be faster and higher. Okay, so the statutory requirements for this process are that I, as the health officer, declare to you as the executive body, three things. The first thing is that is there an epidemic of hepatitis C or HIV in our community? And I would say based on this data, while it is better from 2016, we are still in the top five worst for the state of Indiana and we still have a serious problem and a crisis on our hands. Secondly, is the primary mode of transmission through IV drug use? The Indiana Department of Health states that 59% of cases across the state of hepatitis C have a history of IV drug use, and that is the known source of most transmission. So I would also say yes. And then lastly, that a syringe exchange program is medically appropriate as part of a comprehensive approach. And in my opinion and my recommendation to you is that it would be. That syringe exchange results in hepatitis C reduction. And you've seen a reduction of 50% over the course of, since 2016, since it was open. And it's been helping keep our HIV levels low. And loss of that program could result in a change in those statistics. It also allows us to provide access to treatment, access to Narcan, which can help reduce drug overdose, which is part of our initiatives for harm reduction. And it allows access to other services that this population may not have access to, such as insurance navigation, testing, condoms and other preventative health stuff. I had just pontificated about what this would look like if we continued. What would my wish list be if we were going to make changes? I've only observed the SSP once in my time at the Health Department since November. And there are some things I would like to see different. Now, we are operating in a time of tight budget restrictions. And so it's hard to know if that would even be possible. But if I were to tell you what my wish list would be, it would start with onsite, onsite access to a peer recovery coach. Right now, we're providing paperwork about recovery and treatment, which is really ultimately the goal. That's what we want. So we want to stop IV drug use altogether. So we don't need an SSP. So getting that peer recovery coach onsite so they can access the people where they're at, meet them on their level and help them make a change, I think is useful. I think the paperwork ends up in the trash. I think there's opportunity to reduce waste and to reduce cost. I just have little ideas, but I think here and there we can work on it to make a difference. And I think we can maybe get some other partners. I think we can investigate and we should investigate cost and distribution of fentanyl test strips and what role that plays in our community. And this would be the population that we'd be most likely to distribute that to, to help them avoid overdose. I would like to increase testing availability of sexually transmitted infections, also of course hepatitis C and HIV, and investigate ways to increase efficiency. We know we're not really going to be able to increase the time that we're there. So how can we move more people through and get them served and be more efficient? I would like to also just address maybe the elephant in the room. Because the question I get all the time is, you know, are we enabling drug use? And the CDC data shows that these programs do not increase illegal drug use. And so I guess I would advocate that I don't think we are enabling drug use. I think we are enabling hepatitis C and HIV prevention. And that's what you've asked me to do as your health officer, is to protect the community. And I believe that it is our obligation to protect all of the members of our community, the people that use IV drugs, but also everyone else. So the victims of needle sticks, whether that be me in the emergency department or first responders at the scene or, or Beth when she goes to pick up the needles after a 911, you know, call to come pick up this needle trash. Less hepatitis C makes that less risky. And the family members of, of these individuals. I take care of drug overdoses every day. And every day, they have a family member that comes to pick them up. And it's a mother whose heart is broken or a, or a spouse whose life is really, really hard because of this or a child. So it's challenging and those individuals are at risk too with those stray needle. So it's challenging and those individuals are at risk too with those stray needles in their house. So it's worthwhile to help all of these members of our community. So now the recommendation or the request is that you consider, rather than a two-year renewal this time, a one-year extension is what I would propose. The reason why I would propose that is because in June of 2026, the state will take this question on. And at that time, they will have to decide whether this moves forward statewide. And if they do not think that it is appropriate to continue, then it would have to stop immediately everywhere. In that time of one year, we would have an opportunity to work on this wish list, to potentially make some changes, get some more data and then potentially move forward from there. If the state were to approve it, we'd bring it back to you for discussion again then, of course. I have add a request from the Board of Health that you consider this in two separate questions too. The first being whether or not you find that we have an emergency or a crisis of hepatitis C in our community because that determines whether or not anyone in the community can participate in a syringe services program. And then that the second proposal or question be whether or not the Wayne County Health Department manages it. And that is all I have for you, but I'm happy to stay for questions. I have Dr. Ryder, I have Dan Burke.
So this is a faction that's required of the commissioners. So turn this discussion over to Jeff and three commissioners to proceed, address this.
Thank you, Max. Just a quick question here, Kathy. In the first paragraph of this handout that you gave us, the purpose, it says that the World Health Organization and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention recommend SSPs to prevent the transmission of HIV, hepatitis B and C and bacterial infections. So, and you certainly alluded to that, the most significant perhaps marker in Wayne County would be reducing hepatitis C. It does not mention, at least in that statement, the issue of drug use and getting people into drug treatment. So would you say that getting people into drug treatment is a primary reason to proceed with this? Or is this a secondary reason and the primary reason being reducing the incidence of disease that comes from IV drug use?
I think it would be disingenuous to say anything other than these programs are designed to prevent the spread of hepatitis C. I think that what I find unique about the opportunity is access to these individuals to give them opportunities to seek and to access treatment programs. But truly, clean syringe is about stopping the spread of hepatitis C and preventing rises in HIV. The bacterial infections mentioned are like broad. There are local skin infections, there's endocarditis, there are spine infections. I mean, that's devastating as well, just harder to get a number on. So that is a huge problem in our community as well, like hepatitis C. Just harder to give you data about.
Okay, thank you very much. Other questions?
I have a couple. I'll start with, I think, relatively easy one. So if I'm reading this right and explain to me, so Wayne County, the numbers have decreased in hepatitis cases, correct?
Yes, sir.
But also the state of Indiana has decreased.
Yes.
And only six counties in the state of Indiana participate in needle exchange, is that correct?
I believe it is eight.
I believe it's either six or eight, some ran by.
Yes, it's less than 10 for sure.
So is there any explanation to that?
Well, I would tell you what I've learned since November, being your health officer and engaging in Indiana Department of Health, is that if there are 92 counties in the state of Indiana, there are 92 counties, 92 different ways to do something. And the Indiana Department of Health provides recommendations and kind of vague guidance, but not clear cut. I mean, there are some protocols for how to manage certain things, so I don't want to be too broad about that. But how you manage the Health Department is varied across the state. And so I think it is, it is a lot. It's a politically charged, emotional question for a lot of people.
And then my second question is, with the reduction of budget through First Indiana, if this program was to continue, how are you going to pay for it?
It's a Dan question.
That's a Dan question. I have the wish list and he has the budget.
So. I've not sat down in detail and looked at it, but the salary would most likely be paid out of the COAG grant, the school liaison grant that we finished a couple of years ago that we have money left over for, as well as the supplies. We would still require Reed Hospital or rely on Reed Hospital to supply us the money for their syringes.
And that would, is, do they supply, is it a dollar amount that they supply? Or do they say over 1,000 or 50,000 needles per month or how?
Previous years, they supplied us with $30,000 a year. This year here is 10,000, 2025.
10,000.
That's because we had a surplus in the fund, so we didn't beat all 30,000.
Is what we requested.
Correct.
So has that allotment of funds from Reed paid for your entire use of needles in the past?
Yes, all the syringes. It doesn't cover the staffing and some other supplies, but yes, it covers all those syringes.
Okay, thank you.
The biggest cost is really not the salary. It's the salary and it's the disposal of syringes. Ster recycle cost us anywhere from 1,500 to 3,000 a month, depending on how many syringes were, you know. And that's not just from syringe exchange, that's from diabetics, you know, from the community dropping off their syringes. We pick up a box from RPD a couple of times a year, you know. So it doesn't just come from the syringe exchange.
There was some concern in the past as to how the program was being run and particularly how many needles, how many syringes people could access and that it seemed like it was significantly more than they would have brought in. But I believe you've changed the rules on that, is that correct?
Yeah, back in September of October of last year, I took over in September. So once I got some data, I approached the Health Board and asked them. At the time, it was, there was no limit. If you want 2,000, you get 2,000, you know, you wanted 200, you got 200. We typically got a one for one. Sometimes we didn't, sometimes we got more than what we'd given out. But I just thought there needed to be a limit on it. So the Health Board approved 100 per session. So that's the maximum you can get per session. If you don't bring us back 100 or approximately 100, we'll allow it a couple of times and then after that, you're no longer allowed to come back, so. And they are estimates on the returns, but we have, they're pretty educated estimates. We've taken the syringe containers and filled them up with clean syringes and weighed them. So we know exactly how many, you know, we go off of weight. So it's a pretty close number.
Other questions? Aaron, do you have any?
I think you've got a smash.
Thank you very much. I think, do anyone on council have any questions for Jeff?
Matt Bales, not necessarily against us, just curious. Has anyone contacted the prosecutor's office to collect any data on how many of these syringes were actually locked into a crust?
Dan question.
It's a Dan question.
I have made contact with the prosecutor's office and sheriff's department to request that and I've not had a response from Wayne Department, so.
I just think it probably would be good to know that in future to help you if you're.
So I requested data on how many arrests were for prayer finale only, you know, how many had another charge tacked on to it. And then I also asked both departments to show up to a meeting we had a half, two months ago to express their opinions and thoughts and.
Are the syringes still individually numbered?
I have a spine X, I didn't think.
There's no way, no way to identify a syringe that comes from the program from CBS per se. When it first started, they were.
I was gonna say, wasn't that part of the program that it had to be identified as in the needle exchange so that?
There's a lot of things that got out of policy or procedure over the years. So yes, it was, it used to be that way. And I think for the sole purpose of law enforcement, to be able to identify them so they didn't get a pair.
It was a syringe.
For about the only purpose.
Are the current needles a one-time-use needle? Because originally.
What you're talking about, the needle actually.
Yes.
When the needle.
It's safety, yeah?
Yeah, it's when they inject, the needles no longer can come back out. I don't know the, I'm not a medical person, I don't know the technical term, but no, these needles can be reused.
Because originally they were correct, when the program first started. And that's one of my concerns is talking to recovery groups. They know that those needles are being used more than once, which the purpose of the program is use it once the way. But that's still a big concern.
Do you know, was that a cost savings measure to not use the?
I don't know why they went from that, I don't know.
Is that something that you would entertain bringing back to the program if it were approved for another year?
Yes, absolutely. I do think it will cost more, but I think it's worth entertaining, worth investigating. I cannot tell you that it is safe to reuse a needle in any situation. The kit does come with bleach and other products that you would need for sterile injection.
I'm glad you brought that up. Could you explain to everybody here and to the television? Because I did not know this until a few months ago. This is not just a needle exchange, you give them a kit. Could you explain what's all in that kit?
It's in the packet? No, it's for, okay. I have a picture, I think. Well, it contains cotton so that you can put the drugs through the cotton and filter out the debris, which is bad, like for endocarditis and spread of bacterial infections.
I've got somewhat of a brief description here.
It comes with a tourniquet, it comes with the little silver cook pan, I suppose. Bleach, we include, oh yeah, cleaning and, well, cleaning instructions to clean syringes in the instance that they're going to be reused, sharp containers, so we provide those, the cotton pellets, filter substances after cooking to prevent the need to draw from the same filter. And then wound supplies, so alcohol pads, antibacterial ointment, bandages. We also provide condoms as part of it and Narcan is available.
So it sounds like everything but the drug.
Yeah, yeah, I think so because the, each part of the process has a risk. If you don't filter the drug before you inject it into yourself, you will get endocarditis, you know, which is an infection of your heart valves that then spreads the infection to everywhere else. If you use like a dirty needle, you're at risk for spreading like hepatitis C, HIV, all of that. The bleach, obviously, is about killing all the potential bacteria that you would be exposed to. The antibacterial ointment, honestly, probably not all that effective, right? But the bandages and the alcohol pads about cleaning. Viable hepatitis C virus in needles is good up to, I'm just looking for this data so I didn't misquote it to you, is good up to nine weeks. So they have taken needles and tested for, in like viable virus, so not dead virus that does nothing to you, but viable virus, nine weeks in a syringe. So I mean, the syringe is the bottom line. And if we cut our costs by taking away the cook kit, which we could discuss, I think, you know, the program would be cheaper. I think it would be slightly less effective, but the rest of that stuff is probably not affecting our hepatitis C rates. It's just affecting the rates of the other infections that are associated with IV drug use.
Thank you.
Jeff, I do have a question on Dr. Bales' wish list. The access to peer recovery coach. In the context that Dr. Bales is talking about that, would that qualify for the restricted educational piece of the opioid funds? Could that, because I'm assuming that peer coach is to get that person and say, do you realize what you're doing and try to educate them? And might that be where that money could potentially?
Aaron, Aaron's kind of heading up the opioid settlement.
It would have to be, it would have to be an approved, an approved education program. And approve, it's, use that word very lightly, with the restricted opioid funding. But it would have to be direct education approved. And approval would be, would be the commissioners along with, then we would have to get it approved through the Attorney General's office.
So, oh, okay. So if they had a program, if Dr. Bales came up with some kind of educational program with the peer recovery coach, then that could be looked at as a maybe answer to her wish.
Could be.
Way to put it, okay. There you go, thank you.
Well, I've never been a supporter of a needle program. I just felt like this, enabling people to use the drugs. But I'm one of those that go out in the middle of the night, somebody sitting at the stop sign, foot on the brake, passed out, needle might still be in their arm. It's scary. I just feel like it didn't enable us.
Is the $30,000 from Reed, is that confirmed already for us?
So we'd have to ask for each year.
Have to ask, and we don't know if they would.
They're obviously aware that it's up for renewal this year, so is the money.
Would have this in the control cell. Have it in the past without hesitation, so I'd have to assume, but I don't know that answer 100 percent.
Well. It's the approval, Max is asking if this is on a calendar year or fiscal year. It's on the state's fiscal year really, of July 1st, July 1 to June 30. So typically that in the past, the approval has been on that state fiscal year basis. Okay, thank you very much for coming in. We're gonna, one thing I would ask is, I have a decision before or on June 4th, on or before June 4th, can do that. Or whether we have the renewal or don't have the renewal. So I have to make the proper notifications to the state, center staff, so forth and so on. We can do that. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Probably get that on the due for the gender.
We're your mate between now and then.
We are. Brandon's next.
And Brandon, update us on the bridges, the bridges that are under construction as well as future issues with funding.
So is the open man's the actual man of the bridge or doing?
Quite a wish.
All right, good evening, your friendly needy bridge engineer here tonight.
He needs money.
Just wanted to kind of give you a, wanted to give you an update. I've provided you the first page of your packet in the past. I just wanted to provide it to you again with the current updated values. We do have three bridges under two lettings coming up in October this year. Specifically, I wanted to point out the Bridge 720. The construction costs have not gone down, they've gone up just slightly. And we're looking at about a $1.2 million shortage in end-up funding as well as local funding. That is the total. So if we are to continue with that project. So if, if we are to continue with that project to go to letting in October, we probably need to look at how are we going to fund that? The second page uh, kind of shows if the bridge fund was to absorb that project. It's going to give you an end of the year uh, balance. Uh, we've got 500,000. Uh, and if it does not set us up in future years i- in a, in a good manner, so. I'm coming before you tonight to ask for some additional funding and, and how, what ways we can accomplish that goal with that project alone. We do have three more projects that are potentially going to letting next year. Two of those uh, do have some funding shortages as well. Uh, again, so between the remaining six federal projects that we have, over the next two years, we're going to be short about 3.2 million uh, to support these projects. So I'd like to, if you're looking at the second page, the second row kind of illustrates uh, potential funding requests for this year being 1.2 million and next year being 2.3. And then that also kind of shows you what the bridge fund balance from year to year moving forward would be with that additional funding for our bridges. Anybody have any questions on the first two pages?
Those future years are just a guesstimate that stuff will come in under, I mean, over budget those years too, right?
Yes.
Good. This is gonna keep happening.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we've had some more talks with NDOT. They're really getting restrictive or more restrictive. Uh, I know that the past two projects, we were favorable in getting additional money after letting. Now telling us that the next two fiscal years uh, are very tight and there's no additional money, so. I'd like to plan for the worst, but still have high hopes that we would get some funding after letting. Uh, like to be prepared going in, into October if worst case does happen.
With the new legislation that passed recently, there was some additional money that could be available through community crossings or whatever it's called.
Yes, so, but.
To get some of that additional money requires a county to have a wheel tax.
That is correct. Um, the third page in your packet is a couple of slides from the, the ICE conference that they had. That kind of explains the House bill 1461. It, as it pertains to the road funding. Uh, with some changes to the community crossings grant. Out of this pool, they're setting aside 100 billion off the top. And that is going to go for uh, projects that we apply for, kind of like we've done in the past. Um, in the past, they've get given about 300 million across the state. They're cutting that down two-thirds, so it's going to be more competitive when we do apply for that part of community crossings. Now the, one of the changes that they, that they implemented inside community crossings was that whatever is not spent in that fund from fiscal year to fiscal year will be distributed amongst the counties uh, based on lane miles. Only if that county has an act or municipality has enacted a wheel tax. So the, the next two pages, I've, I've kind of provided you with a, a little overview, some, some reading information about the wheel tax and the surtax. They've got to be implemented together. Shows you the minimum maximums and then the, the last page kind of I've highlighted and what the minimum maximums potentially could be for uh, road and bridge funding. Through that direct community crossings payment, they still lay miles to us.
So that require, that also applies to municipalities too, so like the other municipalities, Centerville would not be able to apply for any type of grant unless they have a wheel tax.
That's sort of like your.
It's, this is not for applying for grant, the community crossings grant. You can't apply for that 100 million dollars that Brandon had obligated to uh, without having a wheel tax. How are uh, the, they're going to separate what was one pot of money for a community crossings will now be three pots of money. One for community crossings with about a third of the money. The other actually going to Indianapolis uh, if they can match that money uh, a dollar for dollar. And if whatever they don't match would go into the third pot of money uh, along with another 100 million dollars that would be uh, you could be awarded based on lane miles to every entity, but only if they had a wheel tax. So most of the, most of the surrounding counties have the wheel tags. In fact, I think all of the Indiana counties that, that have a county uh, have a wheel tax. Many more than that, about two-thirds, I believe of the counties have that. But it's a significant uh, potentially a significant amount of money that, that we would be uh, excluded from if we don't entertain a wheel tax. So obviously the legislature has decided that they want to move us in that direction. You've heard many times from legislators that we need to first use the tools they've already given us before they'll entertain giving us additional resources. This is, this is one of those tools that uh, we have been fortunate to not have had to uh, implement that tax to be able to keep our roads and bridges uh, in a, in a way that I think most of the surrounding counties envy. Uh, we have, we have done a great job. Brandon and Mike and, and their crews have, have uh, continued to do a lot with a little. While inflation has driven up particularly construction costs uh, at a higher rate than some of the other things that to budget for, so. That's, that's where we're at right now.
Brandon, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say we've been able to keep up.
So that could mean City of Richmond or Centerville.
Centerville cannot, cannot apply for.
Richmond.
Richmond can.
Could do a maximum of $25 if they choose, and we could do a maximum of 50 on vehicles.
Correct. And my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong here, Brandon, but if, if the county were to adopt it and the city were to adopt it, it, it would, it would be cumulative, so that the, the city would continue to receive a part of the county share, but also would receive uh, the tax that they would adopt.
Well, that's not fair. I'm being white male.
I didn't.
That sounds like.
The legislation that.
There wasn't a whole while that came out of that house. That was fair this year, was there? Brandon, can you give us a report or give us an estimate over the last five years? How much community crossings funding has Wayne County received?
Oh, I've got that number. I didn't bring it with me tonight.
Could you share with us through an email?
I, I sure can, yes. It's, it's been substantial. We've really benefited from the program. That for a fact, we've done uh, probably since its inception in two, 2016. We've done probably 20 or so bridges with, Mike has had some road projects for material when he does his force account work. We've really benefited from the program.
I think it'd be important to understand what we benefited and what we would be risking with what we're facing.
Cause we're a part of that 50/50 split on construction costs, so you know, you're basically paying double projects moving forward without this money. Uh, so you're.
Again, remember that the legislation that actually passed does not require us to pass a foot, or a a wheel tax in order to be eligible for the community crossings.
The one-third.
But it's a third.
But for, but for the, the other that would be awarded by lane miles, it does require that you.
That would be, and I'm not advocating that at this point, however, I believe you stated that in that one-third, but it would become more competitive across the state.
Correct. Still got all 92 counties and the various municipalities going after a smaller pot of money.
Correct.
But yes, the, the second portion, the direct payment to us requires the wheel tax.
And maybe you know, maybe you don't know the answer to this, Brandon, but initially it was competitive. And, and in fact, the first time that we applied and received uh, community crossings money, we did it collaboratively with the City of Richmond and, and the town of Centerville on uh, on the uh, the Gar Jackson and Round Barn Road redevelopment that was essential for, for the, the industrial park and the Blue Buffalo project in, in particular. And because it was an economic development project, we, we scored high and all three of us received funding um, where everybody did not initially. It's, it's kind of changed. The rules I think have changed as to how that money's been awarded, but do you think it's going to go back to an economic development um, issue on, on how, how those applications are scored? Cause they won't be able to fund everything.
Correct. Yeah, there'll be a lot more people turned away. Uh, in, in my meetings with Kathy E. McAllope, she's the director of local programs uh, within DOT. She kind of touched on, you know, they're going to be looking for grammatical errors in the application, you know, as before they would give you, hey, you need to fix this or you forgot to submit this. It's just going to be a hard, nope, you're, you're out, you know? Uh, they're going to be really looking at the ADA compliance, making sure we're following our plan, we're up to date. And could potentially be putting more requirements on that to be approved.
Correct.
Uh, for that. Um, and I know that the, in the past several years, they've been prioritizing bridge projects. And I'm not sure if that's going to be able to continue or not because of how much more competitive it's going to be, so.
So this third pot of money, or will it require the same 50% match?
It's awarded on, based on lane miles.
But do we have to match the money?
No, it's a direct payment.
I mean, in a sense, you have to match it by having a wheel tax.
Yeah.
It will generate revenue, but it's not a, it's not like you 50 kind of basis.
Have to apply for it. It's just a direct.
Oh, it's a.
Direct, a formula based on lane miles in the.
And it's a direct payment, not an application to get it.
Correct.
I have a.
The first hun- 100 million in the first pot, you can still apply for, I think it's a million and a half, I believe. We can still apply for that and still get our direct payment, so we can do both. Uh, but it requires.
That's the, that's the part that requires the match.
Yeah.
So my, my couple of questions, one is for people that are watching. And correct me if I'm wrong, but does the county, we, we fix and take care of all of the bridges in, in the county that includes in the City of Richmond and wherever. Is that right?
Yes, the only bridges we do not maintain are the, any bridges on the state roads and any county bridges that cross over the interstate.
Okay, so that's information for them in case they did not know that at all falls on us. But my other question is, in the order you have on here, how bad are these bridges? I mean, if we don't do them, how, you know, or is this a, is this in our strategic plan? And we've had these out there for a while, looking at them, or are they really falling apart and what? You know?
So with the federal projects, uh, they take anywhere from four to six years from cradle to grave, from through design into construction. So at the time we applied back in 2019, 2020, for the majority of these projects, they were in poor condition at that time. It just takes a while to get through all the designs and, and through the process, so. The only caveat to canceling them now is any funding that we've, federal funding we've received, we have to pay it back. So you're, you're late in the game to cancel. But at the same time, it's, we got to look at the big picture. We got to lay the pros and cons. If we cancel this, we got to pay it back. Can we bring it back later? Or it's best to just move it forward.
Just to add to, to what Brandon said, the county does have a 10-year bridge plan.
Correct.
And uh, every two years, we, we uh, hire a engineering firm to review uh, the bridges and, and assess where they're at. So we do have a plan. Um, we are working towards that plan as funding allows. But obviously if, if it takes six or eight years to do a federal project, we've already identified it as a bridge that needs work and six to eight years later, it, it needs it even more. So uh, hopefully that answers your question, but that's Brandon's job is to stay on top of the condition of our bridges, to recommend to us which ones need work, whether it's repair or complete replacement. There is a plan.
And my question was as much for the people watching, just, just hearing what we're talking about. We all know a lot more of this than they do.
Absolutely.
To bring it to them and let them know the bridge is not going to fall in tomorrow, but how bad are they? Just so, thank you.
And there are, there are intermediate steps to put uh, uh, weight limits for crossings of the bridges uh, or to close them entirely if, if they're unsafe, but uh, the ones that remain open are safe, but obviously every time you use a bridge, every time you drive on a road, it, it deteriorates it to some extent.
And, and to drive your point on a little bit, Kathy, how many bridges do we as Wayne County are instruct, or do we maintain?
Uh, I believe we're the top six in the state and we have 230 bridges currently.
Bottom bridges.
Yep. Historically, Wayne County has done an excellent job of maintaining bridges.
And roads.
And roads.
Yes.
And roads. I believe we were one of the first, if not the first county to have an engineer on staff. So we've had a history of watching our bridges, maintaining them, keeping up as well as we can and don't want to do anything that uh, gets us on the wrong side of that. Once we get behind, it'd probably be impossible to catch up.
Yes, correct. Yeah, with the average lifespan of 75 to 100 years on a bridge with 230, you have to replace two or three a year to stay on track and it's uh, with the current construction costs, it's, it's.
I can wonder, Commissioner Zand, the engineer for having a plan, sticking with that plan and keeping it us up to shape. So we need to seriously consider how we're going to address this shortage.
Yeah, the only, only thing we need to do is have the council provide the money to stay on the plan, right, Brandon?
That's correct.
Super easy, hadn't.
It's easy cause we probably have weight. You just wouldn't like them.
I think there's money in the, in Commissioner's budget that's in the carpet fund.
Continency kind of 25,000, do you have help?
Okay, so Brandon, we, we need to have this issue resolved by when?
I, I would like to see maybe August for this year. Um, have a little bit more time on the three for next year during the bu- budget process, but uh, on the, the Bridge 720, um, that's letting in October, sooner the better.
Yeah, the money, the, the money actually has to be available prior to letting, is that?
Correct, yeah, appropriated or, because you have 30 days to pay the um, construction invoice that NDOT sends out once the project is deemed awardable, you've got 30 days to pay it.
So that's the 1.2 million in additional money by August that you're asking for commitment.
Correct.
Thank you.
But don't we also have to apply if we should decide to do the wheel tax? You also have to have that application in by September 1st for next year?
It's uncorrectly approved. It was approved by.
Yep, so that it is enacted by the. So we will do receive the first round, which would be June of 26th or July. So we will do receive the first round, which would be June of 26th or July 1st, somewhere in there. End of the fiscal year would be the first round of that direct payment.
Okay. Thank you.
So we need to have that discussion more thoroughly on the ramifications, the results of a wheel tax. Go through a statutory required process to put that in place if we do that. We, we will be having more in-depth discussions on that in the near future. Do you have anything else that might be of better news for us?
I do. The sample road bridge is, is currently open now. It looks very nice. Heine Road is shortly behind that one. I would say the next couple of weeks that one should be opened up. And the bridge 701 on South G Street, waiting for a school to, to let out before installing the protective safety railing on each side. And NDOT did confirm that they are going to give us the extra 400,000 that we need for the overrun of the patching that we discussed last year. So that is some good news. So.
Appreciate that.
We, we had talked last year about the possibility of cutting costs on that bridge by not installing the safety rail. But as it turned out, NDOT came up with additional money, much more than the cost of the safety rail. But only, we could only get the additional money if we installed the safety rail. So, so from a financial perspective, it worked out better for us to install the safety rail.
Right. That's good news.
Yeah. So I'm, we're working through our last changeover finalizing that project. So I will be back to ask for the additional 100,000 ish appropriation to go along with NDOT's support to, to close that out. Don't have a final number on that yet.
Okay.
All right. Free time.
And Creed Ray, I appreciate you coming in.
Brandon?
To you too, Keith.
Brandon?
Yes. I'll get with you tomorrow on the other question I had.
All right. Mr. Hickamatha.
Okay. Got your bi-weekly project sheet in front of you and I'll go down that very quickly. On the annex generator, as you know, it is, it is in place and operational. Was a punch list created and we're about a third through that with the contractor and the subcontractor to correct those issues that were identified on the punch list. It does not affect the operation of the generator in any way. But there's, but there are issues that need to be corrected before that project can close out. The fairgrounds parking project, Brandon and Gordon Moore, the surveyor, had gone out to the fairgrounds last week to start studying of what we needed to put in place to provide drainage for the proposed site at the parking lot. Param is indicated that he should have that to commissioners to consider sometime in the next week or two. Once we have that, we'll be able to start putting a cost number to that and share that with you at a future date. Maintenance building security fence. We do have two quotes on that. The commissioners heard those today and took those under advisement. We are, want to look at additional fencing on the west side of the courthouse to fence in the cooling tower where the prisoners are taken in there. So we're not quite ready to pull the trigger on that project yet, but we do have two quotes on it. Security fence around the maintenance building. The courthouse front entrance still continues to move forward, a little bit slower than anticipated. You're still saying they're going to be done in June. I'm not sure that I, I'm buying that yet, but they've indicated that they will be. The commissioners were provided with some spec cut sheets on lighting, the security bollards, and we've already decided on the screening for the, cover up the transformers that are on the north side of the courthouse. So commissioner will be looking at those and making a choice as to the lighting and the bollards that will be installed on that project. The proxy guard lock system continues to move forward. Haven't heard anything different that that too won't be in place by June or sometime in June. Now that'll move pretty quickly. Once we get, get that going to transfer, transfer over to keyless access. So the commissioners looked at today, the criteria that we'll be sending out to all departments to identify those employees who need access to what doors and when. And then the commissioner will also approve the proxy card policy that goes along with the proxy card usage. We presented that to all department heads, elected officials to give them an opportunity to weigh in on it. And so the commissioners will see that next week in his file on form. And then the courthouse elevator, they did finish last week, removing all the debris from the bottom of that shaft. And, and they got to look at the bottom of the area that where the bottom of that flue sets on. And so the next step in this will be to put that out for bids for the removal of that flue. And part of that project will also include opening up the spaces on the floors where the elevator will stop. That will help facilitate removing the flue because remember this goes all the way from the bottom to the top of the courthouse. So that's the next step in getting a cost estimate for that. And then the commissioner's also got to look at some other projects today. They'll be looking at that more in depth in the next couple of weeks to prioritize these projects on what we want to bring forth in. Which ones are critical? Which one should be done? Those, that'd be the criteria. Part of those are ADA projects. You heard Brandon talk about that. The states look at, you know, our compliance with our ADA transitional plan that we created several years ago. We try to do an ADA project every year according to the plan guidelines. Remember we've upgraded the bathrooms in this facility, the bathrooms in the courthouse and the courthouse plaza that we're doing now is an ADA project. Probably the next biggest one we're looking at is ADA compliant drinking fountains. So that'll be just among some of the other things, some security issues, some facilities. Remember we had a, we had a facility evaluation done 10 years ago. And during that time, there were a number of projects that were laid out. And now that we're moving into year 10 of that report, some of the things that weren't quite as urgent back then now are rising to the top of the, of the pile that be considered. So commissioners will be looking at that over the next couple of weeks and we'll come back and share those with you as well. Any questions?
So what's your timeframe on the elevator?
Next step is the, is to put this out for bids. The, our engineer is putting together those specs. Commissioners will re-brief that. And I would assume that would be sometime in the next 30, 45 days.
Correct. Remember one of the complicating issues is on the second floor, there is a memorial wall and that will have to be moved on this process. So we'll, taking it one step at a time. Some of the, some of the things in this next project are, are specialized things that a, a general construction company would not be able to do, taking out this, this flue and moving and, and reassembling the memorial, the carved stonework there. So we thought it made a lot more sense to split it into projects that, those that are qualified it on directly instead of going through a general contractor who will add cost on to the, to that part of the project to be able to do it. Hopefully this will work out and we'll be able to move forward this summer with the next step. I'm going to pass out to you several documents here that I want to review with you very quickly. I won't go through every bit here, but you'll have a chance to digest it and let me know through our questions. The first one is the, the weekly financial report of our health insurance program of Dunn and Associates. You'll see in that, in the second block that the balance this week is, is just, just under $4 million. So we're, we continue to be in good shape for our health insurance program. The next document is a, and stop me at any point if you have questions on any of these. We need to reappoint on an annual basis, the members of the Wayne County Redevelopment Commission. For you guys, Gary, Beth are your current appointments. It's a one-year appointment that needs to happen sometime before first meeting for the year of the redevelopment commission in June. So probably at your next, your next meeting on June 4th, you'll want to consider appointment of those, those members. The commissioners have three appointments, including himself and, and two at-large members. So we'll be, we'll be tanning that before June as well. The next document is starts into some of the information about our planning process, the countywide planning process that we're working collaboratively with a lot of the municipalities in Wayne County plus the Wayne County Foundation. This, this first document, hopefully you have, I've got it in the right order. It's kind of small. I apologize for that. But when we met with, with the consultants at a workshop a few months ago, we went through an exercise to identify what was important for Wayne County. This list on the front page is best as it was reviewed by consultant and put together into these four categories of housing, indoor youth recreation, workforce development slash transportation, and then roads and infrastructure. They are requesting that we put a little more detail, a little more flesh on the bones of, of these particular areas of interest to see if we can identify a specific project or projects that go with each of these. Remember there's a little different urgency for this planning process as opposed to the help program through a few years ago, because there is no specific funding attached to this current planning process. So we don't necessarily need to identify a very detailed project and the costs associated with that in a particular timeframe, like we did with help and the ARPA dollars that had to be committed and then spent on certain timetables. The next document is the, the list of all of the projects that are being proposed by the consultant to be included in the strategic investment plan. And those are by category as well as by community. And so I'll adjust the next two pages at your leisure. The next document, which is, was originally in color and I have a phobia about putting too much stuff in color. So you don't see, you don't see a real fancy picture there. But this is a sample of, of a project that will be highlighted in the, in the report, in the final document that's produced by our consultants. So it will identify a strategic investment by, with a description of the project, some action steps of what else needs to happen to be able to move this project forward. It identifies some potential funding sources to pay for the project. And so HWC, our, our consultant is, is starting to work through this list of projects. They'll identify 30 to, to 35 projects that will be included in the report. Complicating this a little bit is the way that we proceeded with keeping a possibility of a food and beverage tax available to the small communities. And so when the city of Richmond submitted a request to change their food and beverage tax opportunity, the legislature eliminated the existing food and beverage legislation that goes back to 2005 that had not been implemented by anyone in the county. But that original legislation allowed any municipality within the county to adopt its own food and beverage tax. That was eliminated with the verbiage that went along with the city, the city's request. It was not a request from the city of Richmond, but the idea of, of the legislature to remove the, the remaining opportunities for the communities. So we requested that any other communities that were participating in our planning process and then had restaurants would have the opportunity to consider the food and beverage tax for their community. The county is not included in this new, in this new plan, just eight of the, the small towns. So they have the option to impose food and beverage tax in their own town. The, the verbiage that was, was required, that was worked out in about three days over a weekend that was carried by, by Senator Roth. Actually called for specific projects that are identified in the county's strategic investment plan as the projects that could be funded by food and beverage tax dollars. And so we, we have been working since then to try to communicate with the communities what, how that came about, what's available, try to get some estimates of, of what their funding might be. In some cases, you know, one of the towns has one diner that probably would not produce very much revenue if they did decide to go this route. But we thought it was important to give them the option locally to, to do that if they chose to. Because again, the original legislation was being eliminated. The last three, I think three pages, yes, goes back to, we all had kept them months ago. These are the actual boards. Remember we split into three groups and each group came up with their own list of, of potential projects or in some cases they're, they're kind of general ideas more than a specific project. But these are the lists for your information and to take a look at of, of where those three groups came in with information responses. There's some overlap between the three groups. But we will need to look at this over the next month or so and try to refine what we submit to the, to the consultants. They're happy to work with us in, in trying to refine this list. But we'd come up with more specific options and a smaller list of, of options, which is what they tried to do with that, the first page that just lists four things. So they've taken some of these, some of these lists and it, and combined them. So maybe there's three or four different listings here that the consultants combined into one, one idea from that first page. So we want to decide whether we want to go with that first page, the four ideas that are, are written there, whether there are some specific projects that we want to include and start working on. The next steps in the planning process of how we might implement one or more of these projects. So I'll stop there. See if you have any questions. We'll be working on this in the coming month or so to try to get some clarity on us, what we want to include in our part of the, of the strategic investment plan. Any questions on any of this or anything else for that matter?
To the strategic information plan, it's so is, I, I hear we. So is that really, is that the committee that's working on this or the foundation? Is it commissioners? Is it all of us?
There are different levels to this. There are, there are different levels to this. Okay? So, uh, the, the final work product of the consultant identify from all of the projects or ideas that are submitted from the eleven communities and the county. The thirty-two, uh, ideas that make some sense to them. And the steering committee, uh, to put together this list and the start of that process is, uh, those two pages, uh, this spreadsheet that is, uh, in fine print.
That has like whether one, two, three, four.
Correct. Now that will come back to each entity for approval of, of their own projects. So that the, the final product will have the stamp of approval of the municipalities, the county who are participating in the planning process. The overall document will consist of a couple of different parts. One, this spreadsheet, uh, with specific information for the thirty-two projects that are identified as high priority by us. And a listing of all of the other projects that were identified by each municipality. Along with, in part because of the complication of the food and beverage, uh, legislation that requires the, if anybody adopts it, the money would be spent on, on projects that are listed in this plan. So it, it will have a, a process to add to, uh, the strategic investment plan projects over the course of the next several years. So that if, uh, if the county or one of the communities says, you know, we really, the next step for us is to do X, that there's a way to incorporate X into our strategic investment plan. So hopefully that answered your question without confusing the issue too much. But it will come back to us. Obviously, uh, the commissioners as the executive branch will, will have input. But you all will have input because if we can't fund the project, we're not, we're not going to accomplish it. So we want to work together. Again, my idea of a team of ten, I think we're all pretty much bought into that. And so in my opinion, all ten of us work together on identifying which of these projects, we want to move forward with, how we want to prioritize them.
Jeff, is that what you're calling the steering committee?
The steering committee is actually working with HWC, the, the, uh, and it's a, a group that was put together by, uh, by the foundation. So we're, we're providing some oversight and direction and I, I am a member of that. There are members from most of the communities that are participating as well as from the foundation and some of our partners, the ADC, the Tourism Bureau and others. But the, the final determination, uh, will, will have to be approved by each of the participating municipalities.
Just last question. So it doesn't sound like the food and beverage tax that passed legislation is any, is worth any conversation?
Well, but not, not for us because it, it is not.
It's not a countywide tax. It'll just be individual to either towns.
Individual or the city. At the city, the city does not have the same restrictions because they hired a, a consultant and, and worked on this for, for six months.
I thought theirs was restricted to parks.
It is restricted, but it is not restricted to the projects that are in this plan. And so when, when I went to the, the committee, the Senate committee that was looking at this, they required that there be specific, uh, guardrails that they would approve. And the only thing we could come up with in that last twelve hours was let's include the projects that are in this plan. So that's, they approved that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, Jeff?
So again, whether or not food and beverage is only, you know, tangential to this planning process. Whether anybody ever approves it is, is a moot point. We want to try to identify what is some of the next, uh, level of projects that we want to work on collaboratively.
Okay. Here today, the fleet committee, Matt, uh, discussed several different issues. Barry, you want to update on that or me too?
Oh, I can. Um, if you, uh, might or might not recall that, uh, over the past several months, we've had conversations about, uh, the next purchase of, uh, cars for the sheriff department and the need for that, that rotation. The sheriff came a couple of months ago to the fleet committee and, and made this request and we spent some time, uh, working on this. But at the meeting today, uh, the fleet committee voted to recommend a council to go ahead and proceed with, uh, the commissioners, um, advertising for bid for five Chevy Tahos, um, to replace the needed, uh, vehicles in the fleet or transfer those out. We had talked about paying for that out of our one-time and we have a healthy cash balance in that as reflected on Steve's report. Uh, the estimated cost for the five Tahos and the equipment to make them road-ready for the deputies is approximately three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars.
So that's the purchase price plus the additional equipment that goes into the car.
It's not cheap.
Purchase price is.
Think it's our threat number.
Purchase price is, is estimated at something just over fifty thousand dollars per vehicle. And then the additional equipment, the light bars, the computers, the radios, the, all the equipment, the storage boxes and so on.
Barry, does that include those, I think Jeff just said it was fixed storage. So we can't take those out of the ones we're getting rid of and put them in the new one?
I don't think they will put in the ones that are transferring out. We bought those boxes for the new ones.
Yeah, these were like.
Good question.
Drango, so.
Not really, you know.
Other indication, the public safety is not cheap. So I would, uh, I'd make the motion that out of our one-time, uh, we go and authorize, um, the money to be available for commissioners.
Balance in that?
Two point six million.
I'll say you bet.
Any further questions, discussion? All is in favor of the motion to prove up to the three hundred and seventy-nine thousand from the one-time line item to purchase five and equip five vehicles. Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Anything else from that meeting?
No, I think the only other thing is we are doing an exhaustive review of every vehicle owned, entitled and insured by the county. As we're looking at future budget years and what the need may be, uh, for all departments. And, uh, you know, we, we pay a lot of attention to the sheriff's department because they have a lot of cars. They're on the road a lot, uh, and they have a, a large need, but we have other departments that, that have, County Highway has a lot of vehicles, uh, but the rest of them are like one here, two there. But they come at a cost. So we are taking a look at all of those, um, in the coming months.
So the five new vehicles, we are in the process of auctioning online. Five vehicles that these will replace. So we're not adding any vehicles. The old, uh, command center vehicle is ready to be sold and it's soon. Well, it's recommended that the commissioners consider putting that up for option as well.
We're looking at, at two aspects there. One, whether there's any requirement that, uh, if we, if we sell, uh, something that we purchased with, with COVID money, whether it has to go back to federal.
Health, that's the health department. We're talking, talking. Bovle for the end.
Another commander, you're the command center. Commissar, and it would go back to. And it's the, it's, you're right. It's the health department van.
The other item was the recommendation from the health department. You remember the mobile clinic? It's purchased, um, limited use opportunities throughout the calendar year, a lot of limitations for the use of that. And some mechanical problems, um, does not warrant the continued ownership of that. So the fleet committee, uh, made the recommendation to the commissioners and to Steve to pursue the legality in getting rid of that vehicle.
At the request of the health department.
At the request of the health department. That's true. Yes. So they'll be working on that. And I think there was question about how that was paid for and.
It was definitely paid for with, with COVID, the first tranche of COVID money. So we'll, we'll need to investigate.
I'm just curious, how many miles had we even put on it?
Apparently not many.
So it's in the shop and where it is driven.
Yeah. They can't use it in the winter because it's winterized. And they've had some electrical issues that they've had to.
They're located where they can use it.
It was a huge waste of money.
Steve, I guess as you look at that and the viability of, if it could be auctioned because of the money that was used, if it can't be, you know, there was some conversation about replacing that. Would the law allow it to be traded on useful vehicles?
I did a cursory check before I keep in here. And at, at first glance, it looks like that we passed clawback time. It was December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So at least that's what I'm just finding online right now. But we need to dig out the contract that we had and see what, make sure that.
I think that's it.
Any other business to take care of?
I just have, so I want to thank the commissioners. I know y'all have had some conversations around WCTV and, um, how to continue moving forward with our, uh, support for them. I thought I had heard possibly that y'all were still wait, we're still trying to figure out which meetings have to be recorded or not recorded, live streamed per the state law for July first. So I didn't know, um, if I could help, what I can do to help get that to the point. I do have, and I think, I don't know if he gave this to you guys or not, but I did get from Eric today, the actual proposal based on what he thinks we have to do for.
Haven't seen it.
Haven't seen it? Okay. So if you can pass that to Jeff. So anyway, I just, if there's anything, commissioner, commissioner, um, yeah, if there's anything I can do to help with getting, just knowing where we are and what we need to do on that for July first, that'd be great.
Making a vital part of this community and that they're supportive of both city and county and small towns.
Maybe if you're one hundred percent, some people would act as much as we can.
So speaking of one hundred percent, we, we looked today at, uh, at what franchise fees come into the county. It is obviously far less than, than going to the city is because of the way K two three works. But, uh, uh, I didn't realize that we get franchise fees from two different sources. Want the, the largest being Comcast and that is, uh, the, the most recent payment for the first quarter, uh, would put us on track for about twenty-four thousand dollars a year. It's about a little over six thousand dollars. But we also get, uh, money from Spectrum or Charter. And, and that is about two thousand dollars, uh, for the first quarter. So in total, we're thirty-two, thirty-three thousand dollars a year. We currently give twenty-five thousand dollars that we have budgeted this year. We've talked a little bit about the possibility of giving a hundred percent of the franchise fees, which is a moving target. So I, you know, we, we give money on a, on a monthly basis, have for many, many years. So I think we want to have that conversation with council about, uh, setting a number probably, uh, looking at whether we want to, uh, increase the amount we're giving in twenty-five and then what's the budget and number for twenty-six. But, um, that's, that's where we're at. Again, it's a moving target. Each quarter we, we get a little different amount. My recollection is typically in the winter, we get a little bit more because people are inside and they, they cable and watch more television. And in the summer, it's, it's a little bit less, but, uh, that's, that's where we're at right now. Our, our conversations have focused on, uh, up to this point. Being purchasing the new owl and working through our IT department looks like we have a pretty good, uh, ability to, to, uh, to stream on our own. Haven't seen this report, uh, so we'll take a look at this and see where we're at. But I'll, I'll make copies for all you, you folks, uh, and we should, we can look at.
And I don't, I don't, again, I think it depends on what meetings. It doesn't seem to be clear what meetings we need to have.
And we're working on that. Later, we reached out to you and the other two commissioners about having a meeting together discussing this because we have discussed it individually. We've not discussed it at us, as, at a commissioners meeting with all three of us, uh, in the room. You were going to ask about, we did buy them about thirty-four thousand dollars worth of equipment this year to help, to help them. They needed to replace equipment in the studio that.
And that money has been.
That has transferred and they have the equipment now. Just in time to, to get notice apparently from IU East that their status was changing. So I think.
I appreciate, I mean, I appreciate.
We think WCTV is important. We want it to continue. We think it provides a valuable service for the community, uh, in terms of access, transparency. But, uh, you know, we need to make sure that we have the, the means to participate. You guys want to comment on, on this at all?
There's a lot of, with WCTV and the relationship with IU, it's, it's changed a lot here real recently. Uh, and there's, there's more information daily. There's been even more information a day that's out. I'm not really liberty to share that at this point. But, um, I, I, I think it's a very valuable resource for us, uh, WCTV is. And, and I see the value in them. And I do believe that we need to support them as much as we can, uh, like we pretty stated. And I, I would like to see us moving forward utilizing them for a streaming service. But, uh, that's for, you know, for all of us kind of wrap our minds around and decide on how we move forward from here with that. So.
I think if people need to realize that the revenue stream or from the fees has been to church going downhill for quite some time as people are streaming more.
Yeah, I agree.
Satellite. All that, the cable companies do not have a volume of business that they did have and it, it is going down steadily. So.
I agree.
That, that's finally got to the point that it's really making an impact as well.
Which one nice thing about WCTV, they have their YouTube channels, uh, and different things that they put all the programs out on, which is very nice. And I actually, when I watch, I'll log into the YouTube channel and watch, uh, their recordings off there. But, uh, but they're very good to us and have been for a long time in our community. And I really appreciate what they do.
We appreciate what you guys do too. Didn't want to come across as just a lot of people asking questions and.
Sure.
Getting phone calls and being able to be able to answer some of those questions. So.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I just want to make sure you got that.
Howdy bow. Anything else become before SCD? We have a motion to adjourn.
Check.
All is aye?
Aye.